Let's meeting to order. We're gonna take a moment of reflection, as we've been doing for the last several months. You're welcome to join council as we think about our upcoming meeting and anything else that's going on. Thank you. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and something? I'll ask Councilman Torrid Hall if he would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. President.
We have a public hearing, one public hearing tonight. Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, hereby known as CAPER. The town of Christiansburg, as a recipient of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funding, is required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to prepare the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The CAPER is an evaluation performance report detailing accomplishments toward meeting the goals outlined in the 2010-2015 Consolidated Plan. The CAPER compares the actual performance measures with those measures listed in 2015 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Nelson, is that you? Who is that? Mr. Warren, alright, where are you at?
Thank you. That summarizes the prepared remarks that I had. Really is a comparison of what was done in 2015 with the actual performance, what the action plan laid out with actual performance measures. We are wrapping up our citizen comment period. We have not received any comments yet. The plan has been available online, on our website, as well as at the library. And we will be concluding that month-long comment period at the end of the week. And if this is to be approved by council, we will get that, those results to HUD and then close out the 2015 cycle for our funding. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, without going too deep, we're gonna pass. We have school board people here, so we need to make sure we're gonna pass this thing. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes of November 22nd, 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions or comments?
I'll need to abstain, as I was in Richmond, number 22.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Paul?
Abstain.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Five oh one. The next section is Citizens' Comments. It's when we open the floor to general public that may want to come forward and discuss any questions, problems, comments they may have, or would like to make about the town. If you are going to participate, I ask that you come to the podium. You give us your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone here to address council tonight? Seeing none, we'll close the citizens' comment. Now for introductions and presentations, Ms. Powell, I believe you're gonna present this. This is recognition of Blacksburg Breakfast Lions Club for the support of the second-grade Greater Swim Lessons Program at Christiansburg Aquatic Center.
As we all know, there are several organizations and individuals in our area who are giving back to the community and who have achieved notable accomplishments, and they don't always get the proper recognition. So we've decided to add a portion, once a month, on the agenda to recognize these groups and individuals. And we've also added a form, just so everyone in the community is aware as well, on the right side of our homepage, where you, a citizen, can go in and recommend someone for recognition. Tonight, our first group is part of a program that all of you guys are actually aware of, and that's the Second Grade Swim Lessons at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. Those lessons were available to all Montgomery County Public School second graders, and they're made possible by the Blacksburg Breakfast Lions Club. So I just have a really quick presentation to give you guys a few more details, if this is on. Might have died. Let me get it over here.
Would you let me do it?
Sure, thank you. So, a quick program overview. More than 1,400 second graders have received swim lessons because of this program. In 2015, there were 660, and this last year, which just concluded in October, there were more than 750. The Lions Club is contributing additional money in 2017 to allow the Aquatic Center to give each second grader four lessons instead of three, which they felt was really important because it helps incorporate the practical components of the safety lessons without taking away time from the actual swim lessons. And just some logistical notes, the program ran Monday through Thursday with one morning session and one afternoon session. And on average, in each of these 1.5-hour sessions, there were about 50 second graders at one time, that's a cap. And each student received a 30-minute safety lesson, a 30-minute swim lesson, and 30 minutes of free swim and skill practice time. And then we just have a few photos to show you how much they enjoyed this program, which not only is it fun, obviously, but it's really important because, you know, there could have been some students here who wouldn't have received swim lessons, and there's a big safety component of this program as well. I think there's one more slide of photos. So, clearly, they had a good time. That's my really quick presentation. We have several members of the Lions Club here, and I'd like to invite them up, as well as I know we have several members of Montgomery County Public Schools, representatives from the school system, if they'd like to come as well. I don't know if you guys have a few quick things you wanna say, but I'd love to have you a picture. We have a certificate to give the Lions Club, because we're really appreciative of this program, and it's a really, really great service for not only residents of the town, but for the entire county. So, thank you, and come on up. I'd love to get you guys up, if you wanna get in the photo. I know you were a big part of making this program possible as well, and I know you guys wanted to come to give your support to the Lions Club. Yeah, let's kind of gather right in this area. Hi, how are you? I'm good.
The lounge board chair.
Nice to see you.
Let's gather together right here.
We don't teach swimming.
Thank you, everybody. One, two, three. Thank you, everybody.
Can we say something about this?
You're in charge.
With the Aquatic Center here, at the retreat, Mr. Showalter and I made an effort to, we heard what you folks, I had done with this, and you're awesome. That's awesome. With the pledge like we have here in the Aquatic Center, there shouldn't be any child in the county who can't swim. And we suggested at the retreat that you challenge other clubs and let other clubs try to match what y'all've done, and we appreciate you so very much.
One comment I wanna make, from a safety standpoint, and number one, we appreciate, there's a lot of community service organizations that we have, and Lions Club is one of the first and foremost that's involved in the lives of a lot of the children, and a lot of the children that are underserved in our communities, so you all pick up the burden. And in response to, or specifically speaking with swimming, there's been a statewide initiative for a couple of years now about mortality, and there's mortality studies that go across the state, and they look at children in this age group right here as being very susceptible because they're very mobile, and they get around, they do their own thing, they have their own lives, and they get involved sometimes in unfortunate situations. And a couple of situations come to my mind, and it's certainly with, in the coastal areas, with a lot more backyard pools and things, that it's much more dangerous. But initiatives like this, once again, I think demonstrate that Montgomery County's on the forefront, we're proactive, we're not trying to be reactive, and I just wanna thank you all, because we see the benefits also, from a community standpoint, of the, again, the organizations that are giving their time, their effort, and their money to allow these types of, what I call incredibly important initiatives. So, again, I thank you, and I thank the school board as well, because it takes all of this, it takes all these parties in the Aquatic Center working in conjunction to make this happen. I appreciate it, I thank you, and again, this is one reason why Montgomery County is on the forefront.
You know, I'd just like to say this too. My grandson is in the second grade at Christiansburg Primary, and Colin could just, he was just ecstatic about the whole thing. He'd been swimming before, but he just thought it was such a great deal, you know, that all the kids from his class got to go in there and go together and walk around. And I think even a more important point, I just happened to be over there one day when they were having these sessions, and I just happened to be talking to one of the lifeguards, and she said to me, she says, "You will be surprised how many of these kids have never been to a swimming pool before." And what an education, just going to a pool and getting involved that way was to them. And just, so it opens up a whole new door, and I know we think this way too, that hopefully some of the parents will see how important it is for their kids, and they bring them there, you know, during holiday sessions and weekends, and I know it satters a lot now, the pool is very, very crowded. And, yeah, so it's just a great deal what everybody is doing, and everybody has worked together so well on this. Thank you.
I think everyone in this room reflecting has a time in their life when they almost drowned. It might be at the beach, it might have been undertow, it might have been to someone's pool or a creek. I know there's one in my mind that's very vivid, in the creek, but you may never know the lives that you've been saved already with that, but those kind of numbers, you can rest assured there's probably been at least one life, maybe more, saved just by someone learning, you know, what to do in a water situation that they might not otherwise. So, kudos to everybody involved, and you may have to wonder whether your efforts have made an impact, because they've probably saved at least one life already, possibly more.
I'd just like to appreciate what you've done for the town, and as Harry said, we discussed it during our retreat pretty heavily, not only this, getting our youngsters and our students into the pool, getting them used to it, but there's some other programs that the Aquatic Center has out there, which our advisory board is, and Terry and her staff have gotten, and that's, and Brad mentioned, you know, we all remember a time when we're drowning. Well, I would say there's maybe one or two people, and I'm gonna speak for you, in this room who can't swim as an adult, and the Aquatic Center has programs so adults can come and learn how to swim there, and I believe we've all been touched somewhere in our lives, at least recently. I know this man I knew was a great guy who didn't know how to swim and drown, and it means a lot to the town of Christiansburg that we're providing that service to our citizens. So, thank you.
I think that this shows an excellent partnership between the civic clubs and the nonprofits, and the Aquatic Center and the school board, but what it also shows is there are no boundaries. I mean, this thing is open to all of Montgomery County. So, your efforts reached out into Auburn, my grandson came over, some other places that, you know, Eastmont, you know, and the kicker to this thing is probably working out the transportation, I would assume, but, you know, you did a good job getting it together, and we, as a governing body, appreciate what the Blacksburg Breakfast Lions Club has done, in addition to all that you do for the site and for those citizens also. So again, let me just echo the thanks and the thoughts of all of my fellow council members to say to all of you, thank you for a job well done. All right. No other presentations tonight, Ms. Powell?
I've got mine.
Yeah, good. Yeah, and you all are certainly welcome to stay for the meeting. Joe Straub got in front of the camera, and that's all he cared about. Thank you. This thing sheltered out pretty quick. Old business. Automated conveyance, 0.069 acre portion of Stone Street to Kroger Limited Partnership One. The public hearing was held November 22nd, 2016.
Make a motion to approve the conveyance of the property of Stone Street to Kroger?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any comments or questions?
I just wanna note that there is one or two changes that Kroger has requested to the deed, which is, shouldn't impact this, it just, we have to fix our reference to a plaque, because when this was prepared, there was only a preliminary plaque available, so...
I'd be kind of glad to put this one to sleep. Six months. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six oh, thank you. Next, we'll go figure. Next, we're the right-of-way variation, vacation and easement relocation plot from records for Kroger Limited Partnership One, hereby vacating a 0.069 acre portion of Stone Street and portions of public utility easements, one lock, 555 North Franklin Street, for the land conveyance of...
I'll likewise make a motion to approve the vacation, right-of-way vacation. We'll be taking up the actual plaques here in a few minutes.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six oh, thank you. Under new business, we have three appointments to the Aquatic Advisory Board. Terry, you wanna introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'd like to ask for the reappointment of three advisory board members. Jeremy Williams, Phil Stan, Shirley Hallick, and Karen Drake. They have been with the Aquatic Center since the beginning, when we first developed the advisory board. They're a wonderful asset to our advisory board. They guide me and help me with different things going on, give me advice when I ask for it, and so they're very beneficial for the Aquatic Advisory Board.
Just as a point, the council did inquire about attendance, and all the members proposed for reappointment have met our attendance requirements as specified in the files.
What is, are those requirements?
I understand it's 50%.
50%?
That's what I was telling.
We can address that down the road, because I'm gonna talk a little bit more about committees as we get deeper into it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I'm the liaison for the Aquatic Center, and I have been for, what, almost the last year now. I took Mr. Ben Hoosier's place there, and I have always been just really impressed with how they run their meetings, and the excitement they have, and the enthusiasm they have for the Aquatic Center, and for the kids to swim, and thinking of new ideas to generate more interest in the Aquatic Center, and I, it's just been a real pleasure for me, just to be able to sit in there and listen to you people, and I appreciate the opportunity.
I believe we're taking all three of these at once, correct?
Yes, sir.
As an appointment, or are we gonna separate them out?
We normally do them as a group, as we've done in the past.
Can we make a motion to do them one at a time?
It's up to you.
All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint each person individually.
I'll second that.
Okay. First up is Karen Blake. No questions.
I make a motion to appoint Karen back on the Aquatic Center board.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six oh, thank you. Jeremy Williams?
I guess, since I might speak up, I have a couple of questions. We have a printout, and it seems that you have, Mr. Williams, you have missed quite a few meetings. Was there an emergency reason for this?
Job-related, if anything.
It's what?
Would be job-related.
Job-related. Okay, and you do serve as the chairman of that committee, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Jeremy on the board, till we get it on the table.
I second.
Now it's on the table. I did take time, and I went through the minutes, and I tried to do that with every person we reappoint. I'm glad you came tonight. Most of the time, we don't get people, and we have to bring it back on the meeting. Attendance is one of my big things, but I, as you know, Jeremy, we work at tech, and sometimes we can't get there. I know the meeting's at four o'clock, and I hope that, you know, that the advisory board will try to work around their schedule in the future. You've been, you know, you've met the criteria, as far as I remember, of our attendance for the past couple of years, but I believe 14, 15 was a little tough, from what I could see there. But the reason why I'm approving you on this board, because I know you, we went to school together, and you're very vocal, and you're very supportive of the Aquatic Center, and I just appreciate your service on there, and that if you would look, just like when I miss a meeting, or Corbin misses a meeting, and I know this guy right here missed a couple of meetings the past couple of years, is when I found out, but just if there's ever any trouble, because I think you're a valuable member on that advisory board, because you're one of those people who will speak up and say their mind, just if you could get with Terry, just so we make sure that we have you there, because it's important. And that's all three of you, Shirley and Karen. Karen and Shirley, we've all served on board together. I think it's very important to have you there, and to have some pushback to us and some information that you do out there. That's the most important thing to me, is the pushback that you guys give us about the Aquatic Center when we start to go down the road on certain items or certain programs. So, and I appreciate that.
So, have a motion and a second. Is it true, is it right?
Yes, sir.
I got a motion, okay, very good. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six oh. And last, but certainly not least, is Shirley Hallick.
I'll move that we reappoint Shirley Hallick?
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion?
She's one of my favorite stories on the Aquatic Center Committee. Shirley and her husband, especially Shirley, are very vocal about her community, very passionate about anything that they believe in, and she has become a big cheerleader for the Aquatic Center. She didn't start out that way, and probably like a lot of citizens in our town. But they, she's one of my favorite stories with the Aquatic Center in general, and we appreciate your enthusiasm, your passion, and your time that you spend outside of the committee promoting the Aquatic Center, because that's our goal now, is increasingly not to try to recoup cost, rather to get more people using it.
We see the articles in the paper, routine keeps us up to speed as well, so we do appreciate that, and that's, I know it's a lot of extra effort and time.
You're still submitting those, right?
They quit.
They quit publishing them.
They quit publishing them.
Except them. He says the things I explained, as to what we're doing, we should be paid.
So that's why Marty's not here tonight, huh? That's why Scoop took the night off, all right.
That's a good part of the reason why I bought the paper, was to see what you said about the Aquatic Center.
I'm to meet with the new editor in January.
Likewise, when I ran for town council the first time, she straightened me up pretty quickly. I was against the Aquatic Center, because of the call, blah, 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 and I didn't know the real facts, and she taught me the real facts. And I appreciate that very much, seriously.
Shirley, why don't you tell them about how you got the time for the Virginia Tech meeting?
I went to ignite, and had 14, enough to cover seven lanes, and my friend and I had eight.
When I left tonight, they needed two more from the high school meeting, so...
So you better get on up there.
Yeah, you can head on out here and get them.
We're taking a break until January.
Shirley, I will say this, that it seems like every time I'm at the Aquatic Center for something, you're there, and I appreciate your time, and as Henry reiterated, it was, just to touch you there first, I understand, I know, but I think it's important, and you've done an important job with us, in helping with the swim meets and everything else, so I appreciate it. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six oh, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate what you do. About to turn this thing over and close the meeting. North Franklin Street, Cambridge Street intersection improvement engineering design contract subject to B. dot review. Who's got that one?
I'm happy to fill in.
You got it?
Yeah, if you will notice on your desk, you had an updated version, the one in your packet. I know the engineering department is under a time frame to get this in, and I had not looked at it yet, so once I reviewed it, then there was some changes. And primarily, the changes that are in there have to do with, we beefed up the compensation provisions to really match what was submitted in the proposal. We made sure that there was indemnification insurance provisions that were added to the contract. We made sure that we had, you know, debarment status, safety precautions, and some of the termination provisions in there, and changes to the contract, which really are statutory, all that comes under the Virginia Public Procurement Act, and also all of the Public Procurement Act requirements for anti-discrimination, drug-free workplace, immigration reform and control act, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, that's why there's a difference. But the amount that the proposal was, has not changed and will not change, and this has now been sent to B. dot correct for their approval, so...
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Counsel, I don't know if I just brought this up. I can see, I'm sure you...
I'm sorry.
I'm just a citizen, and I came in and actually wanted to ask some questions.
Your name, sir?
My name is Brian Shook. I live at 215 Route of Stride Northwest, in Christiansburg, Virginia.
Okay.
I'm here in attendance today to kind of get an understanding of what the proposal for the street plan actually is. When you go online, I can't actually determine if it's the alternate plan, or if there's a primary plan in place.
I'm gonna defer to Wayne Nelson, since he's the engineer.
Okay, perfect.
There has been studies done, sir, and proposals have been made in regards to the new configuration, but the engineer that we've selected is scheduled to have public meetings, and we're going to present options and ideas to the public for comment, and we're gonna select the best alternative.
Okay, because that was kind of my question, when reviewing these plans, it was kind of thinking, I'm not an engineer, I don't necessarily know how to evaluate these plans. Are you who I should direct the questions to in the future, as this kind of develops?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and I can give you my card.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
Yeah.
Wayne, uh, Wayne, is it going to be better than it is now?
Yes, sir.
Still saying the Kegway weapon up?
That's exactly right. I, I appreciate that. Um, all right. Any further questions about the contract? Do I have a motion? To approve?
This, this contract has been submitted, correct?
Yeah, submitted to.
Yeah.
To VDOT.
Yeah, it's for, for VDOT review at this point, correct? Is that the present posture?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So approval would be subject to any, you know, changes that VDOT requires. They're not going to mess with the money, you know, I mean, that, right? Is that, that's my understanding?
That's correct.
It would just be little technical things that they would need in the contract, for whatever reason.
Should we, are we looking to approve this then? Are we waiting to get response back from VDOT that it's a document in which without, if we approve it now, we might be looking to approve it again if they make the revision, correct?
No, you can approve it subject to, in, in, so, approve it, uh, subject to their, their revisions. Yeah, because it's nothing going to be material that would affect.
Doesn't substance, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I have a problem. I'll, I would move that we approve the, um, the engineering design contract as presented.
What the changes that she made?
Yeah, as presented, yeah, with amendments, yes. I second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Any discussion?
I just want to see that done so bad, it's, uh.
You're in about twenty-two thousand, you're in about twenty-two thousand others. All right, so, uh, if there are no further comments or questions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Uh huh.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
This is six oh, thank you. Uh, water sewer rate study contract approval. Mr. Biggs, would you?
Yeah, I can give a quick report if you have any more detailed questions, and she knows to myself would, um, work to respond to that. Uh, we did go through a procurement process, um, consistent with our fiscal year budget to solicit proposals on, um, performing water sewer rate study. Um, we have a proposal from Draper Aiden Associates, um, an amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, we do feel like this study has proven a thing to do with this time. We do have a, a fairly complex, uh, rate structure associated with our, with our utilities, and we have some variables that are changing at this time related to, uh, um, potential changes in wholesale costs and also potential changes in our debt structure, and I think it's, uh, it's a very worthwhile thing for us to do to get an independent third party to look at our structure and, and make sure that we have the, uh, correct amount of cost recovery and, and that we are going to be in compliance with our, uh, financial policies regarding reserves and, uh, and days payables and so forth.
Okay. So you have, is that contract in here? It's probably in the.
Page one thirty-five, I believe.
Yes, sir.
I, I only probably threw one thirty quarter.
Read out a paper.
Yeah, I read out a paper and got it.
So we would secure approval of the contract in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and award to Draper Aiden.
I would move that we approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion?
Just a couple of quick questions. Uh, Mr. Biggs, if you could, uh, if, if counsel, if it's their pleasure to vote on this and approve this contract tonight, um, and then with submission about, what timeframe are we looking to have a, a return product where we can be able to utilize this?
The schedule is that she will, I think, beginning of February. Oh, correct. She had accelerated schedule and non-accelerated schedule, if you would.
Sixty to seventy-five days, give or take?
Based on our ability to provide her the required information she needs.
That would give us a chance to be able to utilize that information during the, uh.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a intent to incorporate what we have in the way of study results into the proposed fiscal year budget?
Right, right. And that would be, that'd be hard time for that.
Yes, sir.
I've had some questions in the past about the need for this, because of the way that we, as a council, establish or make decisions on a year-to-year basis about raising rates and so forth. But one very simple question to summarize it all. Mr. Biggs, you feel like this is a good idea?
I think it's very important, um, project and a good idea, yes, sir.
And I trust that, and I'll, I'll support it.
Okay, so we, do we have a motion in the second? We do. Uh, any other comments or questions? Gentlemen, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Uh.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Six oh, thank you very much. Uh, street committee?
Want to read my form?
Well, I was thinking, I guess there's no way we could lump the first four together, can we? At that, because they're all basic subdivisions. Or, I'm just trying to think. If we need to go through one by one, we certainly will. One by one. Not hearing any support.
I mean, if you, you feel like you can lump them all together and you can do that, please?
I think we can lump the first four together, for sure.
That would be fine with me. I could support that.
He can pass those out, and I'll just go through them all, all four, uh, quickly, and then we can act on it. Call a lot of extra work on the front end, Andrew. You already got them up.
If I may clarify, the, uh, I believe the fifth, which was the Kroger.
Yeah, the fifth was, uh, Street Sonic, obviously Wayne Nelson.
Oh, okay, very good. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Kroger thought he knew.
First time in six months, they hadn't been in here before.
Greg, do you want to let me give more something while you pass on something else?
This is the first one, Andrew.
Uh, this, this is the Hagan Thompson.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and start while Andrew's passing out. This is item number three. This is, um, identified as the lot three and four Hagan Thompson subdivision, tax map, uh, five twenty-seven A, one seventy-nine. And from the second sheet of this, sheet two, you can see, uh, the parcel is actually, lot A and lot B today are one parcel. And it's a very tidy subdivision. Existing house you see on the left is there, and they're going to move a shed that's in the, in the back. You can see the framed shed is, is going to be relocated, and lot B is being created, um, to make two very similar sized lots right here. One's going to front on Craig Street and the other will front on Hagan, as it does today. Right, right now, they're both, uh, the axis is off of Hagan. So that's the first parcel right here, a very simple subdivision.
Now, are you saying that right now there's one lot, you're going to make it into two lots?
Right. Or building lot there along Craig Street.
Have we seen this before?
No.
You've seen similar subdivisions in this area?
Okay.
In the last two years.
Okay, the second one you have now is item number four, and this is, um, on Economy Street. And this basically is, uh, applicant, I believe, is Mr. Duncan, Greg Duncan, who is going to be, uh, creating, there's, there are two lots here right now. Actually, there are, there's, yeah, there, there are several lots right here. They're being tidied up into three lots, lot A, B, and C. Um, the existing lot line that you see, if you see them on lot B is a framed garage right now. Do you see that? There's a lot line running right through that. It's very odd shaped. So, Mr. Duncan is tidying up this to create three lots, um, out of probably five or six. There's some paper parcels down there under lot C. So there'd be nice three orderly, uh, logical lots created out of probably six or seven willy-nilly plot, or willy-nilly, uh, properties right here, and, um, can expect to see some development on lot B. So, um, that's the sec, that's, uh, item number four.
Let me stop one more.
Yes.
So right now, right now, there's, is just, again, just one lot?
No.
No, there's a bunch of lots.
There's a bunch of, but when you talk about A, B, and C.
Just to give you an example of how willy-nilly it is, if you see the framed garage on lot B, see?
Okay.
See, there's a property line running right through it, that's on the skew.
Okay, okay.
It doesn't, very logical. Instead of that lot line's going to be abandoned.
Okay, I got you.
That's the existing lot. So they're making three nice, great to make in three nice lots out of five or six that are not very logical.
Okay.
Okay, so that's item number four. Uh, the next one. Is, uh, item number one. Yes, that's not Christiansburg industrial. This is item number one. This is off of Stafford Drive on Lynn Drive. And what you see on this one is a, uh, they're presently. Four lots here, and they're being reconfigured. Uh, the parcel that you see with one point two-three-two acres, uh, has a house and the, right now, the twelve acres surrounding that is part of that house, and they're subdividing the property between family members, to reduce the size of the one point two-three-two acre parcel from the parent parcel, and two family members are splitting up. The four point one acres is going to, um, lot number seventy-five on Lynn Drive, and eight point one-eight-two acres is going to lot seventy.
Can I ask you a question on that one?
Yes.
Mr. Stipes, the four point one-one, well, the four point one acre plot, um, directly adjacent to the one point two-three-two acre plot, does that have any road frontage at all?
Well, it does along Lynn Drive, because that lot is being abandoned. It's a very odd shaped lot. If you can see right here forward.
Yeah.
You can see this is being.
It's a little diagonal right there.
This is the, this is the lot now, yeah. So it does have road frontage, but it's along Lynn Drive.
So, so it's actually taken where it says the point five-three acre, the tax map four, four dash one dash three C, that's going to be part of the four point one-one O?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, I guess.
That's one of the family members. You would probably know the name, it doesn't matter. It's one of the family members that's getting a portion of the, this is the mother's land right here, one point two-three-two.
Okay.
And it's splitting it between two children.
Mom's keeping the one point three-two and the other kid's getting four point one, and the other kid's getting eight point one.
Right, that's correct. So there, I said there was four lots. There are presently three, and there's going to continue to be three that are just configured differently to, to split up the twelve acres.
And, and, and Mr. Stipes, I don't mean to be deadwood, I just want to make sure I'm correct.
Yeah.
Again, that, that line, because I'm looking at the vicinity map, and it, it just doesn't look like that's over there. It looks like it goes straight down to that corner with that acute angle, which doesn't give it any, any road frontage. But you're, you're telling me that where that, uh, that point five-three acre, that is part of the four point one-one?
Andrew, do you understand what he's saying?
So the lot line would be vacated.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, right here on the vicinity map, it doesn't show the little thing coming out here, which is what they're saying here. But is this actually going to be part of it?
So it, it is part of it.
Okay, so, okay, that's.
It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so that, that should be, would be like that right there.
Yeah, we can have them.
No, that's what is confusing me.
Yeah.
The vacant lot, the, the lot line would be vacated and then it would be part of the four point one.
That makes perfect sense, thank you.
Okay, so that's item number one. Item number two is Christiansburg Industrial Park.
And this is.
Last one. This will be the last of the four. This is very simple of us. More like the first one.
Mr. Collins?
Okay, this is in the industrial park. You're probably familiar. This is Collision. The parcel two, an existing industrial building is Collision Plus building right now, and, uh, the parcel one and parcel two now are one parcel. And it's being split to create two parcels, and, uh, Collision Plus will basically front on Houchens Road, which is on the top of the sheet, the east side of the sheet. Uh, but it will continue to have access on Industrial Drive at the bottom, as you can see with an easement. And then parcel one is going to be a new parcel, uh, a new industrial parcel. So the parent parcel was roughly ten acres, and their, uh, request is to preserve the three point three-one-two as parcel two, and then, uh, I guess parcel one. You said that there's been a site plan submitted for parcel one?
Correct, for a contractor storage yard.
Yeah.
And they're going to take the whole, whole parcel one? Or they gotta try to subdivide that?
They're, they're looking just to develop a portion of it, but it would be, but they're, they're not looking at subdividing that parcel. So it would be, the site plan is for that entire.
They're going to use it all, okay.
The whole, the parcel one, all utilized for, eh?
Yeah, it, it will be a contractor storage yard.
Not exactly the type of industrial development we're in.
It's six point four acres.
That's a lot of storage yards.
It's a lot. The subdivision, um, the subdivision conforms with our ordinance, and, uh, the street committee's reviewed all four of these and recommends that the town council approve them as presented, and I'll make the recommendations on them.
I second.
A motion to second to approve the first four items from the street committee report. Any comments, questions?
What's that? Appreciate you going through those, Mr. Stipes. Mr. Collins has made it so much easier to understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Uh.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
This is six oh, thank you. Those four, uh, requests pass.
Item five is just to bring, uh, make counsel aware that we have a citizen, uh, name is, uh, Ms. Jill Colby, that came to a street committee meeting and, uh, had previously sent a request in for a study of, a safety study for an existing intersection, uh, in her neighborhood. Some of you may be familiar with it. It's intersection of, uh, Robin Road and Carson Drive. She actually lives on Cherry Lane, uh, but we reviewed that in our street committee meeting, and the staff is looking into that, and we should have some recommendations next month on that. And that is it from the street committee.
Well, what is she looking for?
Well, um, without going, without getting into it, basically, it's a sharp curve, and, uh, for pedestrians, it can be sort of scary and unsafe to come around the corner.
Uh huh.
It's not got cut-through traffic. It's basically the neighborhood traffic.
Yeah, I've been.
But we're looking at ways to maybe, some ideas to maybe calm traffic down around that turn to make it, maybe improve site distance, and, uh.
Because they already have stop signs here, right?
So you're familiar, okay.
Yeah.
No, there's no stop signs there. It's just a curve. It, it's an intersection that's turned into basically a curve because all four lanes didn't develop. So I just want to put, we just, the street committee just wanted to let you know that we're looking into that and should have some recommendations next month. And that's it, Mr. Barber. Thank you.
No other items?
Uh, Mr. Collins, you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, good. Thanks, though.
So the number six other items is, uh, okay. We'll move to staff reports. Mr. Biggs, town manager?
I want to make counsel aware that we have, um, preliminarily scheduled for the requested interview of the planning commission applicants to precede the Tuesday, January tenth council meeting. So those, um, uh, those interviews would begin at five-thirty. We would allocate about fifteen minutes or so per interview.
And the date of that, what time, Mr. Biggs?
That's, that's preceding our Tuesday, January the tenth regular meeting.
Second Tuesday.
How many interviews do we have?
We have four interviews, and we have allocated time at the end of those interviews for council discussion.
Okay.
Second thing, um, wanted to inquire with you about whether to schedule the presentation of the business plan for the, um, North Christiansburg Regional Park at that January tenth regular meeting, or would it be your preference that that be at a special work session?
I wasn't asked for, and I, I, this had come up about a week ago, and I know the, the documents are still fresh, and still kind of wet on, um, and looked like a lot to review, and, um, a couple of things that came up at the most recent Recreation Commission meeting, that's when it was basically not presented, but that's when it was submitted. Um, I personally would express the preference of us doing a work session. I think it makes more sense to do it that way. Um, and, uh, and I guess with, if we did it on a work session, we, would we schedule that prior to the January tenth date? Would that be, for instance, on the third or something along those lines, or would we be looking to do it on the tenth?
Totally your preference. The consultant has made themselves available.
I, I was, uh, I would be very interested in, um, I, I, I was, uh, I would be very interested in, um, if we could look at doing that, uh, maybe on a date, I think there's gonna be a lot of information, from what I saw, it's gonna be a lot. And it, it might be too much to do it on the 10th, or something along those lines, if we could maybe do that on the 3rd, if that works with everybody.
Or, or even...
That's right, you want me back, but, uh, I think it's important to have us all there as well.
What about the second meeting we have in January, could we do it a couple weeks behind?
Well, I, well, I was thinking maybe along the lines of the 17th.
Seventeenth?
Which is the, the third Tuesday.
Right.
Would you be available then? I think we all need to be there four days.
Yes, sir, I would, yeah, I'm very interested.
And the other question I would ask Mr. Biggs is, if we're waiting until the 17th to do this, and again, and I think it's, again, we need to do that, we need to have all six of us, and, and Mayor Barber here. Would we be looking to do that as a joint with the Recreation Commission as well?
I, I think that works very well.
That's what'd be the next request I was going to make, if it'd be council's pleasure to be able to do all that and have Recreation Commission present, uh, also. And of course, uh, one member of our Recreation Commission, in fact, is, is, uh, will be a presenter that evening as well. Uh, if, if, if it's the council's pleasure not to have Recreation Commission present, I would at least ask that we need to invite, um, Mr. Epple to be present during that, at those meetings.
So, in, in doing that, are we, and, and we're making them aware of the meeting for attendance purposes, or are we going to advertise this as a joint meeting?
I would, I would ask for us to advertise as a joint meeting, but I, I, again, I, I, that's just me, I, I'm putting that out there for you all.
Would we wanna, wanna meet up at the rec center? Would that be a better spot than...
I think you'd have some crowd.
Have some people.
Oh, yeah. We've had joint meetings before.
And I think you have a bigger area for that, to have...
Yeah, it's hard to hold a joint meeting in this room, I don't know if you've done that in the past, but I would just, it would seem like it would be.
So, what, what time are we talking about?
Has Mr. Neal, uh, spoken at all about how long the presentation will be, him and Trevor? I, I'm anticipating a, a couple of hours for the work session.
I think, especially when you incorporate questions, answer, and dialogue.
That's right. So, probably 5:30 to 8:00, yeah, probably along those lines.
5:30?
Or 6 o'clock, whatever would work for you all.
I'll defer completely to you, Mr. All, you're our representative, if you think it should be a joint meeting, I'd go along with that.
I, I am, uh, I'm personally, I think, and I expect for a few, I think we're excited, uh, this is the next big step, the Recreation Commission's been involved, um, pretty much, uh, through the, uh, from the onset. And, uh, I do, I might tell them to kill two birds with one stone, but I also think they have some unique input from a citizen perspective as well, to have them here. The last time we did a joint meeting was, I thought was very beneficial to me. But, uh, if we could schedule two to two and a half hours to do that, if the 17th would work with everybody, and have the Recreation Commission invited to be participants, that's what I would ask for, which would require us to do a joint meeting.
You know, I don't know what their schedules and work conflicts may be, but if, 5:30's, can be tough for people who also have...
Or, or 6:00 would be fine, 6:00 to 8:00 would be, and I, I don't mind the time. I, I will tell you that the re- last Recreation Commission, I did bring this up and made everybody aware that I was gonna talk with council about doing the joint meeting, and it seemed to be very, um, appealing to everybody that was present.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, June 8th, June, I'm sorry, July the 7th, January 17th, 6 to 8. I had 6, 8 to answer, June 8th, that's a little later, 6 to 8, okay.
Mike, July 8th would work perfect for you.
Let me ask this question, there, I, maybe I'm out of the ballpark here, but hasn't there been some talk about the county maybe helping us with financing this? The reason I'm bringing this up, maybe it would be nice to have a representative from the county there.
I don't think we're there yet.
Is that that far along?
They could be in attendance as a member, so...
I mean, we could certainly make them aware of that presentation, but, uh, I, I was not intending to discuss finance options at night.
Okay, okay, but I just thought just to, for them to realize what we're trying to do here.
I think, I think they realize what we're doing, but I, but this is, this is still preliminary stuff, I mean, this is a lot of, uh, research to be, to be presented to us.
Planning commission interviews, will they be here or in the conference room?
Conference room, probably.
Conference room.
All right, so we're gonna meet at 6 o'clock on the 17th at the rec center?
Yes.
And rec center furnishes the sandwiches and the stuff.
And pizza, coffee, yeah.
So, you two are the Mr. Epple?
You don't know till you ask, you don't know till you ask.
Okay, we do.
All right.
Thank you all for allowing that.
What else, Mr. Biggs?
Other reports.
Madam Attorney?
Nope, nothing. Except that Merry Christmas or...
Any other staff, uh, reports for this evening? Very good, uh, council reports, um, Mr. Hubbard, would you like to start us out?
Well, I, uh, I hope everybody saw the flyer that I passed around, I'm not sure where the flyer is right now, but, uh, concerning the, uh, oh, thank you, okay. The New Year's Day that the Aquatic Center's gonna have, uh, I think it's from 5:00 to 5:00 to 9:00, and, uh, looks like they got a lot of, uh, activities going there, and, uh, that's about all I have, Mr. Mayor. And one, one of the things I would say too is, uh, I don't think I made a notice about the Christmas lights, that...
Beautiful.
Have we, yeah, it's just such a good job this year, and I hope that be, if you could make a notation of that in the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Showalter?
Uh, not much has occurred since, uh, the Thanksgiving break, but I just wanna agree with Steve, we, Kelly and I went down for the tree line ceremony, ceremony, we saw a, a lot of you there, and a lot of staff members, and I think it turned out really well considering the weather. But, um, again, this is our second year, and we've had this, uh, at least, uh...
The gala event.
The, the gala event, and it's just, um, it, it, I really like it, and the people I talked to really like it, even though there was cold weather, I think the attendance was very well. And, um, you know, if you look at it, social media, I think that our citizens embrace it very well, and I think this was just one of the greatest things we've done around this holiday season, and bringing people downtown, and building a community around, um, of course, this event, so. Other than that, that's it.
It's too bad Sarah's not here, 'cause she did a great job of getting all those vendors there, and looked like a good many of them were there, you know? Pass that on to her.
Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hall?
Um, a couple quick things, at the last Recreation Commission meeting, we met last, um, not last Monday, but the Monday before last, um, and, um, we discussed, um, the youth of activities, the youth involvement, there's a tremendous amount of young people involved with basketball. We've got a couple members of the recreation, um, family, if you will, that are actually coaching, Chuck Muncy's coaching a number of teams for the five-year-olds, and I just, again, I, it's, he's, and they've actually, there, there's been some, some, some changes of job, um, Tyler's there at the recreation, um, facility, and so Chuck's taking a more of an active role right now with some youth involvement, and, uh, again, I'm sure he'll, he'll, uh, do a wonderful job in that role, as he always has. The, um, I, I wanna echo what Henry said, I, I don't think it can be stated enough, the, the lights, the parade, the downtown event, uh, which is what it's become, it's a downtown event destination for our, uh, Christmas celebration. I couldn't attend this year because we had sick children, uh, and I heard about it from one of them who was unfortunately could not walk, and they were leading, she was, I, I still am hearing about that, but it's a wonderful thing, and we hear a lot about that. So, it shows that we're, I think, we're starting to embrace what people are asking, kind of, almost salivating for what, but they need downtown something, 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 and we're starting to do that. One thing I would ask, um, the, um, street committee, if, if they could look into going forward, um, along with independence, um, there's, uh, first off, I know there was a, maybe a, an individual or two that may have been upset about the double line, uh, there is a ton who have been tremendously supportive of, and, uh, especially around the blind, what I call the blind hill, when you come up around, it's a very, very dangerous section, and, uh, especially with the high school students, a ton of them that whip through there and use that to, to branch out. Uh, I'm very appreciative, um, and I know a number of people have talked to me about that, I'm a member of law enforcement who's not a member of the Christiansburg PD, has actually come up and spoken about how important it is, and a member of the state troopers have told me that as well, how important it is. But one thing I'm seeing along that stretch is a lot of, uh, it's not the parking, we allow the parking along the lines, but there's a lot of trucks that are now parking on the side of the road, uh, whether it's moving, moving vans, or, uh, industrial vehicles, it takes up the entire lane. And so now, and ironically, the last couple I've seen have been on that hill, where they actually have to go completely over to the left of the double yellow line to go back right, and, um, and this is actually some of this concern's been brought up some, from some members of law enforcement to me. It's something we need to look at, um, and I, 'cause I think it's an incredible hazard, when you have to literally go completely over to the other lane, so that's something I'm seeing more and more of on, ironically, on that section. The driveways, I know, aren't very big, but regardless, so these large trucks, if they park on the road, it's completely takes up that whole stretch. And, uh, again, I'll, I understand if it's on a straight stretch where you can see, but on that hill, it's blind, and again, we've got kids that are, that are flying through there. That's the only thing that I, I just asked the street committee, maybe we could look at that going forward, um, and, uh, that's, uh, all that I have at this moment.
Mr. All, one, one thing I may want to do with that is just make an inquiry with the, uh, police department under existing ordinances, if, if somebody's blocking the, the travel lane, I think that we can probably already, already handle that as an abortion.
When I spoke, spoke to the member of the, the Virginia State Police about that, whenever we were speaking, it was, if it requires you to go that far over, it's clearly in violation. I probably should've called at that point, but I thought, well, they're only gonna be there for a moment or two, and about an hour or two later, and I was coming back, still in the same spot. And again, it's on that hill, which means you hit the lines, I mean, it's, it's a rescue for disaster.
You can't tell if there are residents that are parking their personal vehicles there, or...
Yeah, they, they, these are actual, like, they, these would be movers, these would be, um, large commercial trucks and things that are, that are...
You know, providing a service.
But there's just a better place, there's, there's a other little road right beside that you could park in and walk there if you need to, but, uh, it's very dangerous along the independence.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, thank the town staff for setting up for the Christmas parade, and especially whoever put up those barricades.
Yes.
For safety reasons, I think it was a great idea, so I don't know whose idea it was, but thank them.
Is the rec apartment, both of those things? Four, about, what, about 480 of them?
468.
468?
You don't have a lot, there's a lot of utility outside the parade, I'm sure.
Well, 68 of them are orange, 400 of them are gray.
All right, they work.
Doesn't matter, it worked out, and I, I got a lot of compliments from attendees, how nice that was, and even some of the people that participated driving floats and trucks, said it was really nice to have a nice wide lane to go, go down through there, so. And hopefully, Mr. Biggs, you and I can sit down with, uh, the committee and have a debriefing in the next couple of weeks, while it's still fresh on the line. Mr. Collins?
Uh, yes, sir, I'd like to thank the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, the fire department, the police department, uh, for the Christmas events that they had, and we got free food, and they fed us, and I think we should have that once a month.
I think so, too.
And I appreciate everybody who, uh, walked or rode in the parade last Friday, um, my grandkids, we have been talking about this for weeks, excited, and a Friday came and, oh, we're out there, and they said, "We're getting in the truck, we're free." Had to walk with Michael by myself.
And I, I couldn't, I couldn't keep up with my wife, I don't...
Everybody have a great Christmas, too.
Thank you. Um, I will finish up the, uh, I appreciate the comments on the parade, it's something that's become very near and dear to my wife, which, when she's happy, I'm happy. But, uh, I think Justin Shepherd with Public Works told me that his men put in more time this year working on the parade than ever before, and it shows it. I mean, the new lights, or the, the upgraded lights that we put in downtown, it, it made a big difference, the barriers certainly made a big difference. I think Sarah and, and having the, the farmer's market, uh, brought thousands more downtown, and it was a good turnout. I appreciate Channel 7 for being, uh, being there and filming this thing. I haven't yet seen what's been going on in News Messenger with their photos, and I haven't seen anything for the Run Oak Times, you know? So, I'm looking forward to your coverages on it, too. The weather was not the greatest, uh, we had all four bands canceled simply because you can't play an instrument when it's below freezing. The band, it's, Christopher Band said they were gonna come and play until the spit froze into their instruments, and then they were just gonna dr- march, but they decided at the last minute to pull out. The choir was the same way, that there was some concern about the effect on voices and, and this stuff, they've got a big concert or something coming up. It was 70 degrees last year, it was 25 degrees this year, so we're still averaging 47 and a half degrees, so we're not bad, we're not bad. It was a good, it was a good turnout, uh, certainly not as good as last year, when the weather was 70, but there was still a good crowd of people downtown, and, and I think, from what I understand, the vendors were, were happy with, uh, with what showed, we had six food trucks, and I think everybody had a good chance to make some money. Sarah told me, I think, 40s, 47 out of 54 vendors actually came, so it was, it was a pretty good, pretty good turnout there. The, uh, the town looks great, I mean, that Main Street section looks really good. I gave you all a, a small sheets, an excerpt from the minutes of the Quanis Club from last week. We're getting really, 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 really close to getting this operating agreement done, and get that monkey off everybody's back, and, uh, the club has not voted on it yet, I think that's the proposal we're gonna make next week, when the club meets again. Liaison meeting in the morning, we're leaving.
Won't be regular time?
7:15, okay. Henry coming over?
What?
Liaison meeting in the morning?
Uh, no.
Okay. Very good, uh, there, I've had, I had a couple of questions, uh, from one of, some of the council members, and, and I talked with Mr. Biggs about it today, and he has someone working on, uh, a, a complete list of our committees and commissions and memberships and expiration dates. And Steve, I'm not jumping out too far ahead of everything, I think we talked today about, wanna kind of clean those, the expirations up to where they will all end on the 31st of the, uh, December of the year of their term, that way we don't have to remember on May the 15th to appoint someone to planning commission or something. So, I think Tracy's working on that, and...
Right, but what we propose to do is, once we have the, the full information resource that you can reference, that we'll bring forward some, um, recommendations on process for, uh, you know, solicitation of applications, review of applications, interviews, and appointment, so that we can do them in a batch, in a very structured way, that's predictable, and, you know, and really kind of simplifies the process, 'cause it does seem like just about, you know, every month, we're, we're dealing with one or another, uh, board or commission appointment, and it's easy to make errors when we're doing it that way. So, it would, it would be our goal, and it would be a little complicated in the first couple of years, because, you know, where we have terms that expire mid-year now, we would be appointing people to terms that may be a year and a half, rather than two years, to get them, um, you know, on that, that, that end of December or that calendar year timeframe, but I, I don't think it's so complicated, we can't handle it.
I think we could probably look to extend those current appointments to the end of the year.
Right.
So, they might be getting, you know, two years and three months, um, out of it, so I think that would work out.
Hey, can I say one thing, Mike, on that, too? Please, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to also look at the, uh, 50% attendance rate, if that's what it is, that needs to be looked at hard.
I was gonna echo that, and that's something I meant to bring up, is maybe we could add this as an agenda item to the first meeting in January, and just make the attendance policy part of our packet, because I, I was, if it's 50%, then I, I think that we've made an error, uh, frankly, in our...
And I made a error, and what I understood about that, so I'll...
Sure.
There's a document out there.
Yeah, we, we did a policy, so about three years or four years ago, we did a policy, and we started it, and we implemented a policy, I was thinking it was no more than three in a, in a calendar year, and no more than two consecutive, something along those lines, but if we could...
Without, it should have been a...
Right.
Was that just for planning commission?
It started with planning commission.
I know, so a planning commission, and we...
And we expanded it, because we sent it to, uh, we were supposed to send it to every committee member, advisory board member, that we have, not just within the town, but anybody sitting anywhere.
And I know things come up, I mean, it's not, it's not about persecuting anybody, it's, things come up, and, and some, unfortunate things come up, I, I get that. Can I mention one more thing, Mr. Barberfield, if you're finished?
No, they're male, I guess.
Before you jump on that, Steve, if you could, all the, and I like San Zima, he, he wants the complete data of a commissioner. Uh, you, you requested term, you requested pay, 'cause there are some committees that members are getting paid for that we've appointed, and, um, I don't know whether we should treat those different with our attendance policy, um, but, um, there's a reason why we came up with it.
We, we, we have a link where they can access the email, to be able to email that, that representative directly, correct? 'Cause then, like, for instance, in the Recreation Commission, that's actually in the, um, it's in our, um, I will get you the pamphlet that comes out, the brochure, it's, that information's in there, um, but it, it's...
Right, I think, I think a document for council, especially when we have members from any, any, any commission come up for renewal, especially if you're gonna make them on the 30th, I wanna detail, I don't wanna have to spend, you know, 40 minutes of my lunch, having to go through minutes, um, I should be provided that.
I understand, agreed.
And I'm not gonna speak for council, but I do feel like I should be provided that, and I should've been provided the one earlier today. Sorry, Cory.
I was just gonna let everybody know that the John Lindley Lane, uh, park is complete, um, it's installed, been installed for a while now, and that they'll be doing the, uh, if you will, the, um, aesthetic enhancements, uh, in the spring, with the planting, shrubbery and trees and things of that light nature, the, obviously, it's not a very good time right now to be putting stuff in the ground, have to chip the ground away for, um, but, uh, as far as the, uh, the, the actual large-scale, uh, plant, it's, it's been implemented, and it actually looks very, very nice.
I was at a doctor's... I was at a doctor's appointment the other day, and when I was checking in, a young lady turned around to me, and she said, "Do you know what I love?" I said, "Not really," but she said, "I love that park on John Lindley. We live down there, and it's just, it's great for the kids." She says, "You know, it's not all the way done, but there is, at least there's some playtime for them, so."
It's the prettiest piece of equipment we've got in Christiansburg right now.
I have a coworker, actually, she has a baby, but they're looking at it next year. They're counting down the days and months to where they can walk up the street and go to it. Here all the time.
All the neighborhood parks get a lot of use. They really do. And this was a good addition. Okay. Under other business, the discussion regarding the regular council meeting scheduled for December 27th, 2016. There's some interest in canceling that meeting. Mr. Biggs, I don't think there is anything that is so major and pressing that we could not delay it till the next meeting?
I have been checking with the planning staff, at least. There are no applications that would be held up as a result of that. And we don't have any other deadlines that were, that are very impacted by that particular meeting.
Would this require a motion?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we go ahead and eliminate the council meeting scheduled for two days following Christmas on the 27th.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
Just want to make sure we won't have any issues with bills, because I know several times a year.
The bill list, normally you have the first three pages is the to-be-paid bills. We'll just submit that to you at the first meeting in January, and those bills will be already paid.
So they won't shut off the lights or turn off the water unless if we skip meeting.
And I think it, I mean, it just kind of follows in, because I believe we're following the state's recommended holidays, which is the Friday before and the Monday after. So what we're doing on that, I believe. So actually, from Thursday afternoon on, there's really not any town staff to work on any bill lists or anything, so we wouldn't ask to come back and do that. I have a motion, motion in the second.
Just the department head will have it.
The head dog. Any other comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6-0. Next is consideration of scheduling a joint meeting with the Christiansburg Institute in January of 2017.
I'll speak to that. We've been trying for some time to get the two groups, the Christiansburg alumni, Christiansburg Institute alumni, and Christiansburg Institute together. And for the first time that I can think of, that is happening, and it's together with Virginia Tech in Montgomery County, and it's a big deal. And what we're proposing is the 31st of January, which is a Tuesday, as a joint meeting with both, it's, or both Christiansburg Institute organizations, as well as Montgomery County and Virginia Tech.
In particular town you're proposing, Mr. Stipes, in the evening, obviously?
The details will come about, you know, whether it'll be dinner and that, or whether it'll just be a meeting, or just what. But before they're making any plans, they want, they feel that Christiansburg County Council, that solid representation is very important for whatever might come for that.
I'll just let you know, I would be available on the 31st to attend the meeting.
And that's what they wanted, is before they make any solid plans, is make sure that a good, hopefully all of us, but most of us, most if not all, could attend.
I think we were going to have more than, what, four or five of us were going to be able to attend the one at Tech?
Right.
About a month or so ago.
The Councilman Showalter and I have been interacting with him in the meeting, had several lunches with him, and leading him in this direction, saying, you have to get, or we think that getting the two groups together and having some common goals will help everything.
Yeah, I think the other meeting was scheduled, I think, one of the nights that we had our.
The same night.
Retreats, yeah, it'd been a long night.
So I'm interpreting that we should advertise this as a special meeting that will have a forum president.
Again, I know I can be there, as at least three of us know, we can, obviously, there we go.
Would we need to advertise that as a joint, since Montgomery County's may be there, or will be there? I know they'll have a wrap.
They have to advertise.
They'll be responsible for the advertisement. If they're there, it doesn't create additional advertising for us.
Yeah, I think probably, what do we have to do, that seven days, three days, warranty? I think what I'm getting at is, there's probably, at this point, there is not a concrete time and or location.
Right, right. I know we'll frame up the details, but just in terms of putting it in the queue and being aware that this is when we need to not miss advertisement.
And I don't want to put people on the spot, but I would like, I mean, if possible, I'd like to have a feel for who's interested in attending.
I think.
Okay, great. That'll go a long way towards, yeah, okay, thank you.
It'll be interesting.
We have a closed meeting. Mr. Showalter, do you have that verbiage there in front of you?
It's, I got the one on the agenda.
It's close enough.
I make a motion for a closed meeting under, one, Virginia Code Section 2.23711A7, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation or such. Consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. For the purpose of the subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a response, responsible basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. The closed meeting pertains to property located on Industrial Drive.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6-0. We're going to take about a three or four-minute recess, just to.
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg meeting closed meeting, and the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. Only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Hang a second. Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
6-0.
Throw me off here for a minute.
Okay, so we need a motion on.
I would move that the extension as was in our agenda packet be approved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Only that the extension was included in our agenda packet for any member of the public to have access to it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
5-1, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before council? I wanted to tell Steve, I enjoyed seeing Alyssa come up for the parade. I hope she had a good weekend out of it.
It's very nice.
She liked the cold weather?
I got a.
She was wrapped up.
I got a couple of questions, just quickly. Since we're already giving the Planning Commission minutes in our packet, I'd like to get the rec commission when they put those out for a month, and the Aquatics Centers. That'll be good, be part of our packets. And I was looking over the task list. Michelle, thanks for sending that out. It's always good to get that reminder. Saw, there was an item for gateway signs, and I saw sort of like the resolution, Steve, where you have you and Mike to discuss it. I would like to incorporate council's input on that.
I don't know about Mike and I discussing that.
It was way back, I mean, I think that's going to sign to a committee that you're working.
Yeah. Melissa and I are working on that, but I haven't had one-on-one conversations about that.
It just mentioned that you and the mayor were going to have a discussion on, you know, basically aesthetics of them.
Well, that was dated 2015, so Steve was still down in Clayton at that time. Yeah, but it tried. I think it's good that we.
But that wasn't originally what was, I think, on the previous task list. So that was new language, at least for mine. So that's fine.
Yeah, there'll still be a report before council, before we do anything, as far as that goes.
A complete report. Melissa and I actually did a ride around this past week, looking for locations. We're taking pictures of locations for proposed signs. We're going to bring a comprehensive proposal to you for all wayfinding, all gateway signage, and all site signage. So it was all consistent and done at one time.
Site signage and talking about the possibilities of digital signage across the town?
Yes, sir.
And location placements for those?
Correct.
But I guess, honestly, you said, about when were y'all going to be bringing that?
Well, we'd hope to do it by the end of the year. We're not going to meet that, so we're shooting for the end of January.
The reason I ask that is I take it that if that comprehensive plan is evaluated, there might be some budgets that will have to include items.
That's very good.
Anything else?
That's it?
Just want to wish you all a very, very Christmas.
You too.
I will tell you that I had conversations with three ministers downtown after the Christmas parade. They all thanked us for having a Christmas parade. And I think one or two of them brought it up in their church sermon on Sunday that they appreciated that we kept it as a Christmas parade.
Don't have a winter solstice.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
It was a Shree's parade, like.
All right, we are, thank you very much.